Call the roll.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
A call has been established. Next on the agenda is pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District can address the board any questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you stand, come to the center room, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiry. Second, be mindful that you may not receive a particular response to your inquiry this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments. Second call, citizens comments. Last call, citizens comments. Seeing or hearing none, move it forward on the agenda. Agenda item five, AED presentation, five A, Officer State Representative Denise Metzner, Eighth House District sixty-one. Mr. Lavender, want to introduce?
This evening, we have State Representative Denise Metzner here to donate an AED machine to our school district and athletic department.
Hello Chair, Rickman, members of the board. Thank you for having me tonight. Back in March, the governor signed two house bills on making sure that coaches for high schools and schools were trained and certified in CPR and AED use. Because, you know, we were concerned some schools didn't have AEDs, we partnered with the NFL Foundation and they donated an AED. So I applied for one for our schools here. And so I'm gonna hand this off to Mr. Lavender. And I hope that you'll be able to use this and be able to get training. If you have any questions or concerns, you know, you can contact me at any time.
We thank you so much. We hope we, we hope we're trained on it and we hope we never have to use it. It's good to have it and don't need it as opposed to need it and don't have it. So we appreciate the generous donation to the district. It's much needed, but again, it's better to have it and don't need it than to need it and don't have it.
Yeah. And that small box, five thousand dollars.
Do you want to get a shirt to hand off?
No.
I'll just do this.
Okay.
It's easier. Can I go with Mr. Rickman?
Sure.
Or might you come on that side or just?
Hold there for a second. All right. One, two, three. I'm gonna get a couple. So we got some good ones. Thank you.
They got some, they got millions man around. We need roofs.
I, I can tell you that, that Mr. Rover did provide me with a copy of the estimate of two point five million for the roof. The unfortunate thing is, is that it's come a little late, you know, to get in the budget, but it is still on the agenda. And hopefully they're, you know, in the omnibus or school budget, you know, that we, that we talked about later. Next week, we'll be rolling out the full budget, but the school budgets will come, you know, a little bit later. So I have hope, but no promises.
I got it.
But Mr. Lavender did provide that information to me and I did make the ask.
Thank you so much. I appreciate, we appreciate you. Item six, consent agenda, six A, approval of minutes one, June twentieth, June twelve, twenty twenty-four, media, the whole work session. Six A two, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting. Six A three, May tenth and eleventh, twenty twenty-four, board retreat work session. Item six B, approval of bills for payment, B one, bill, bill, made bills for payment. Item, agenda item six C, food service RFP. Item six D, cleansing slash cleaning slash maintenance RFP. Item, agenda six E, MHSAA twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, membership resolution. Agenda item six F, policies for first reading, policy twelve forty, evaluation of superintendent revised, policy twenty-one forty, rescinded, policy twenty-four fourteen, reproductive health and family planning revived, policy thirty-two twenty, professional staff evaluation, technical rec, technical correction, policy sixty-three twenty, purchasing, technical correction, policy sixty-three twenty-five, procurement, federal grants slash funds, tech, technical correction, policy sixty-three fifty, prevailing wage coordinator, new, policy sixty-five twenty, payroll deduction, payroll deductions revised, policy eighty-three ninety, animals on district property, technical correction, policy eighty-eight hundred, religious slash patriotic ceremonies and observations, revised. I think that those are items under the consent agenda this evening. I know it's a lot, I read, but policies for first reading. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item six, which is the consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda.
Moved by Member Dee Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Jay Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I will give you a brief, a run through the policy aspect of that and just give a brief explanation of what they are. And most of them, actually, most of all of them are federal. Most of them are revised, they are already on the books. So we gotta abide by the law, both federal and state. So I'll try to make this quick. It's our first reading and redo this for the general public so they know exactly what is happening as far as policies and procedures in our school district. Policy twelve forty, evaluation of superintendent revised, Senate Bill three ninety-five and three ninety-six was recently signed into law by Governor Whitner, Whitmer. These bills changed the evaluation system effectively July first, twenty twenty-four, revised policy incorporates those changes and they apply to evaluating superintendent. Policy twenty-four ten, prohibition of federal, of referral or assistance, that's been rescinded. That's no longer a policy in our system. Policy twenty-four fourteen, reproductive health and family planning, again, this is a revised. The legis, the legislator, the legislator repealed a portion of the School Aid Act that required disciplinary policy for providing abortion assistance and that provides additional limitations and on instructions in reproductive health or other sex education. This is Michigan law three eight eight point seventeen sixty-six and three eight eight point seventeen sixty-six A respectively. Policy twenty-four eighteen, sex education, again, this is a revised, legislation repealed a portion of the School Aid Act that required disciplinary policy of providing abortion assistance and that provides additional limitations on instruction and reproductive health or other sex education. This is Michigan law three eight eight seventeen sixty-six and three eight eight seventeen sixty-six A respectively. Policy thirty-two twenty, professional staff evaluation, technical correction, a technical correction is being made to current grammar, grammatical errors. Policy sixty-three twenty, purgacy, again, technical corrections. A technical correction is being made and to include a cross-reference to policy sixty-three fifty, prevailing wage was the intent of the current district to review all related content during implementation, also includes miscellaneous grammar punctuation corrections. Policy sixty-three twenty-one, new school construction, renovation, again, technical correction is being made to include a cross-reference to policy sixty-three fifty, prevailing wage. Policy sixty-three twenty-five, procurement, federal grants, funds, technical corrections, again, technical correction is being made to include a cross-reference to policy sixty-three fifty. Policy sixty-three fifty, prevailing wage. This policy has been added because Michigan's prevailing wage act has been restored and will take effect in March of twenty twenty-four. Policy sixty-five twenty, payroll deduction revised, this policy has been revised to reflect the districts, reflect that districts can deduct union dues or service fees. Policy eighty-three ninety, animals on district property, a technical correction is being made to current grammatical errors. Policy eighty-eight hundred, religious, patriotic ceremonies and observations revised. This policy is revised to reflect the recent US Supreme Court decision in Kennedy versus Bremington, school district in which the court clarified the equal importance of and the interaction between the constitutions to First Amendment clauses pertaining to religious rights. The Bremington decision reinforced employees' rights to the free exercise of religion such that a First Amendment and a security district union, uh, discipline or citizenship must consider whether the employee is exercising, exercising the staff member's free exercise of rights. And Mr. President, those are a rediscussion of all the policies that have been either revised, rescinded. And as I stated, most of these are law, so most of them on the books already. And we have the new one, which is payroll, no, I'm sorry, the new one was, was the prevailing wage. And that's why the other two before that were changed to support the new prevailing wage policy.
You mentioned a couple policies that aren't on the agenda.
Uh-oh.
Read twenty-four eighteen and sixty-three twenty more.
Twenty-four eighteen?
Yes.
I should give a page?
Sixty-three twenty-one is part of the Edgar funding. That's with sixty-three twenty-five.
So which ones did I miss?
No, no, no. There was a, there were, there were two that weren't on this list.
Two that weren't on this?
Yeah, yeah. You, you said twenty-four eighteen.
Yeah.
Twenty-four eighteen was not included in the list. And no, no, it was sixty-three twenty-one.
Okay. So do we need to amend the consent agenda? And what is that? Which one was it?
Sixty, excuse me, twenty-four eighteen.
Twenty-four eighteen.
And sixty-three twenty-one.
Okay, sixty-three twenty-one.
Include those two.
Okay. Mr. President, I move to amend the consent agenda, item six, under policies for first reading to add policy twenty-four eighteen, sex education, and policy sixty-three twenty-one, new, new school construction renovation.
It's been moved by Member, excuse me. Ah, excuse me. Uh, to add, to add, to amend the agenda to add policy twenty-four eighteen and policy twenty, sixty-three twenty-one. It was moved by Member Monk and seconded by Member Walker. All right. Questions, comments, concerns to the amendment to the consent agenda. Hearing the same none, call the roll please. And this is to add to the first readings, policy twenty-four eighteen and policy sixty-three twenty-one.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The amendment carries. And then additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the consent agenda as amended. Hearing the same none, call the roll please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The motion carries. Fix us the agenda item seven, Human Resources, seven A, FY fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five contracts. Mr. Lavender?
This evening, Mount Clemens administration recommends the approval of the administrative contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for Team McNeely, principal of Seminole Academy. Mount Clemens administration also recommends the approval of non-administrative contracts for the following, Marie Walls, our Director of Public Accounting, Thomas Hannah, Accountability Officer, Rebecca Elk, Executive Assistant to Superintendent, Tommy Madder, Account Payable, Title Nine Coordinator, Energy Staff Coordinator, and Nicolaia Holliday, Payable and Grant Accountant. Some notable revisions of twenty-four, twenty-five contracts include no guaranteed raises for these positions for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Included in these contracts is the following language, no later than January fifteenth of the contract year. Representatives of the Board of Education will review the budget amendment to determine the value of a salary increase, if any. If a salary increase is determined, this would be retroactive to July one of that current contract year. Vacation days must be used by August first of twenty twenty-five and shall not cumulatively on that date. Previously, they had to be used by June thirtieth of each year. Just allows for some overlap in July when things are a little less busy. Leave days were combined, instead of having sick days and personal days, they were just combined for leave days. That number did stay the same at fifteen. And then if any of these individuals have three consecutive days or more where they're absent, they are subjected to submitting a, a medical documentation. This is in alignment with our superintendent's contract. That number was higher in the past. And then also included was some language that includes failure to sign or return this contract within five business, business days. A receipt will be evidence of your notice to resign from your position. The Mount Clemens administration recommends the approval of the administrator and non-administrator twenty-four, twenty-five contracts as presented.
You heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item seven, of the contracts for administrator and non-administration for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve.
I move to approve the contract order that was presented by Mr. Lavender.
Support.
Moved by Member Monk, seconded by Member Monk. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Lavender?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the contract, uh, three days, they had to provide a, provide a doctor or some type of medical note. Um, that's also stated in the contract. If they do not provide that medical note, we take that as their, um, exit strategy?
No, it would, they would, um, get doc days for not providing support and then it would go for care.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor and the motion on the floor is to approve the recommended administrative contracts for twenty-four, school year twenty-four, twenty-five and non-administratives. Hearing the same none, call the roll please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, item?
Eight.
Eight, uh, coming out of the Personnel Committee, eight A, layoffs, layoff. Mr. Lavender?
The C thing, the Mount Clemens administration recommends the approval of the following layoff for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Social Studies teacher, Mount Clemens Middle School. The individual noted above received a consideration of layoff letter and an individual meeting with building and district administration to discuss their potential layoff. During the summer of twenty twenty-three, the Mount Clemens Community Schools held a budget deficit of approximately two point four million dollars. As a result of increased enrollment, improved planning and spending decisions, the current budget deficit is approximately one point six million dollars. In order to continue this trend and minimize the deficit to zero and then into a positive, reduction to staff must occur. In the fall of twenty twenty-three, the superintendent's evaluation process, Board of Education approved the superintendent's goals to include rightsizing the district staff under a goal area three, financial stability. Administrative guidelines for board policy three one, three one, certified teaching staff regarding the reduction and retention states of following. Whenever a possible notice of discontinuance of service shall be given to teachers affected by reductions in personnel and or programs before the end of the school year preceding the year in which discontinuance of service shall become effective. The collective bargaining agreement with the MCEA also includes language, unless they're made because of a financial emergency or when a professional staff employee returns from involuntary leave, the professional staff employees to be laid off should be given at least sixty days written notice before the effective date of the layoff. Rightsizing of staff is in the best interest of the district in order to improve the district's financial stability. The decision to lay off this individual follows the administrative guidelines for board policy three one, three one and the collective bargaining agreement with the Mount Clemens Education Association and are based on budgetary consideration, economic needs, and financial emergency. The Mount Clemens administration recommends the approval of this layoff for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented.
You heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item eight, Personnel Layoff. Chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item eight. Moved by Member Monk.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to
to approve.
Approve the recommendation presented.
It's been moved by Mr. Monk to approve the recommendation of layoff of the social studies teacher in the middle school. Is there a second?
Open discussion, I'm gonna second it. Got some questions, but I will second that motion.
Second. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Lavender, I do recall talking about the contracts with Human Resources, but I don't recall talking about the layoff for the middle school teacher. And, uh, because I know we didn't have our meeting this month, and I remember this coming from the workshop. Are we at the deadline? It, I don't like being back in your squad, because it's supposed to be sixty days out. Is it sixty days out from this board meeting?
It's, uh, per, per the contract, when layoffs are made because of a financial emergency, at least sixty days written notice before the effective date of the layoff. Teachers are due back August twenty-seven. So sixty days prior would be June twenty-seven.
June twenty, so we're at the
Notice was given last Wednesday.
Right. So basically what you're saying is we're at the last
Correct.
Board meeting before that sixty day, one day before teachers return.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I, I feel like this is just sprung. I, I didn't remember, I mean, I don't much
It was not discussed at the May Personnel Committee and we did not have a June one. Uh, this was, um, sent out in the update last week, I believe. Um, I could confirm that. Uh, as we continued to build the master schedule from kindergarten through twelfth grade to all classes, it was, we were working to, um, I guess maximize efficiency in the schedule. And we were able to find another reduction to help with our financial stability. So as we continued to work through that process throughout the spring, it was finalized within the last two weeks, which led to this layoff at this time.
So are you telling me there may be more layoffs coming this summer? Or this is the last one for the summer? And this position is being replaced by another social studies teacher or instructor or?
Uh, there's, there's, was another cut at the secondary level. Uh, that person will be moved to fill in this social studies position.
Yeah. And the person at the secondary level, I guess we're going by?
Certification, evaluation.
So what does this leave us with in terms of curriculum and, um, both on, on the the elementary, middle school, and high school level? What are we cutting curriculum-wise or class-wise to cover? Or to handle this?
The reductions that have been made thus far, um, have pretty much absorbed all the course, the courses except for one. The one cut that is not being replaced is the media center specialist at Seminole. So all the other layoffs are being replaced with either, well, they're being absorbed into other people's jobs.
So we have the same amount of social studies classes as we had with more teachers?
Correct. Because there was a, a reduction to an instructional coach at the secondary level. That person was moved into middle school social studies. So we have all the same number of social studies classes available.
Okay. So curriculum hasn't changed, amount of classes for social studies hasn't changed on either level?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And so the media, media specialist was not replaced?
Correct. We do plan to, um, well
Further discussion?
We're having discussions to possibly replace that person with a media center paraprofessional who could handle book checkout, um, storytelling, and other media center activities without having a media specialist down there.
Any additional questions?
There's got a couple question. What, obviously, were, was the union notified of all the cuts and everything?
Yes.
Getting proper channels and, okay. And then these cuts are really based on our budget going forward. You know, I mean, we've talked about us being top-heavy as far as teachers and not having the right ratio from teachers to students. So this gets us more in line of where we need to be and also making a hard choice of, we got to make sure we keep an eye on that budget.
Correct.
Because we got some stuff coming up, so, okay.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
So with this position, you said it was not only budgetary, but also evaluation, involved with certification, correct?
Well, whenever we make decisions in regards to any reductions, we have to consider those three areas. This primarily was, uh, more seniority than was evaluation. But whenever we go through that process to decide who would be reduced, we have to look at those factors. This factor is primarily seniority. When all, when all things are equal, right with evaluation, certification, and seniority, then seniority, in essence, is more of a factor.
Does this follow the collective bargaining agreement with the union?
Correct.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Can you make sure you provide us with a, a new union contract? We, we don't have the new one that was, that was approved, um
Last year.
Last year. We never received the new one.
It is available on the website, but
Can you provide us a copy to it?
No.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I made my last comment. Uh, I did second to approve it openly questioning. I do feel like it was kind of sprung, sprung out at its last minute. Now, I do have faith inside my leadership team, my administrators, you, Mr. Rover, Miss Dolph, you know, also Miss Ellen, but, um, I, I don't like the last minute. Throw, you know, I didn't know anything about it. Kind of threw me off a little bit. Discussion might come up later on again, we don't know, but like I said, I made the second to open the discussion. So we'll go from there.
Was this, was this something that was last minute?
Um, it was determined in the last two weeks.
Last two weeks?
As the master schedule had been finalized.
And we are in line with the union contract with terms of notification.
Yep.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
If anything changes in our financial status, are these people gonna be called back?
There's recalling. There's recalling which that we would follow if our finances change to the positive.
And so the instructional coach, if I heard correctly, will move to this position? Will move to to this position?
Yeah, and that and that position was cut.
So we won't have one at secondary?
We will not have an instructional coach at secondary for a twenty-four twenty-five school year.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
You know, letting people go is always hard. It's a tough decision, you know, and. When you look at. And I remember back years when we came to this table and we should have cut. I mean, nobody likes to cut anybody, but we should have made cuts and we didn't, and we robbed Peter the baseball, and that guy is in even bigger trouble. So I applaud you guys for making the right. Calculated decision with the input of the union, keeping them, keeping them all, you know, abreast of everything. And, um, but we gotta realize, so, you know, we just talked about F T Es. So if we get more F T Es, now we're in a position to bring some of these people back. But we need to make this a shizzen because we have to adopt a budget for the twenty-four twenty-five school year. And that's where we at right now. That's not saying, you know, and I pray to God and hope to God that, you know, we, the trend keeps going up. And we get more students to come back and we can bring these people back. But we gotta make a financial decision right now to make sure that we're in line because we gotta turn this budget into the state, to the county, to the state. And 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 we have to make sure that, you know, the numbers should be where they at. You know, humor, I mean, when you talk about human resources, always tough, always tough. I never want to see nobody, always we can keep everybody. But the reality of this situation is that we can. We gotta make some tough cuts.
I'm gonna make just a statement on the cuts. Um, the reason I asked for the new union contract, because we haven't received it. And ultimately, this has been sprung on us and it is our responsibility for due diligence. And I think we need to do that before we agree to a layoff.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? I I hear some concerns about layoffs. I hear hear concerns about last minute. Uh, we laid, I think, four people off last meeting. Um, we're asking for an additional layoff this evening. Um, it's last minute to the board, but it follows the contract. We're not in violation of the union contract. Um, and and so I understand the concerns, but like Mr. Monk just stated, we're trying to right size the ship. We we we've been going too long with too many people on top of the ship and, you know, to to facilitate the people up underneath the ship. Um, so anytime we do so, unless we increase enrollment, uh, which would increase our finances. Uh, in order to to get to right size, we have to, we have to figure out who we, you know, who we send home. Uh, and it's a it's a tough situation, um, but it's a situation uh, that if we want to stay viable. Um, we we have to make these tough decisions. And all I can say is, I've been on this board a while, there's been times on this board that we laid off everybody except the superintendent. And the next meeting, we started bringing people back, uh, because we had to have a a, you know, a a budget that the state would approve. And to the work that our administrators are doing, um, we're not an anarchy. We're not facing a two hundred million dollar deficit. We're not talking about laying off a hundred plus teachers and cutting program. You know, this is, I think, our fifth or sixth layoff that we brought forward, um, this school year moving into the twenty-four twenty-five school year. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing a sing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
No.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Motion carries. Agenda item nine, business committee, eight budgets. A one, F Y twenty-four twenty-five, proposed budget. A two, F Y twenty-three twenty-four, amended budget. A three, student and student and school activity fund. A four, debt fund. A five, capital improvement fund. A six, food service fund. A seven, general fund. Um, Ms. Dow, Ms. Dow, if you'd like to present and start with the twenty, the the amended budget of the twenty-three twenty-four. School year, like to close out that budget before we talk about, um, the proposed budget for twenty-four twenty-five.
Um. I don't know how much detail you want me to go in to all this, but my recommendation is to, um. Approve the twenty-three twenty-four final budgets for all of the five accounts that we've talked about, um. How much detail do you want me to go?
Oh, just go over the, um, the 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 total, the final budget, the final, as of today, when you, this presentation. Uh, I'm looking at the budget for, excuse me, the amended budget for six nineteen. You have total revenue of twenty-one million one hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. Uh, total expenditures seventeen million two hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred seventy-two. Uh, that brings us to a fund balance of three million five hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Am I correct? Am I following the charts correctly?
Um, I'm not sure which one you started with, so I'll go in order then from what I have. So for the.
Oh, I was speaking from the general fund and all. All those are included in the general funds, my understanding?
No.
Okay, okay.
No. Um, twenty-three twenty-four, there's five separate budgets. Um, and we, they are the student and school activity. Um, that final budget is, um. Having a. Revenue and expense of each being a hundred thousand dollars, ending in the estimated fund balance of five hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty-four. And. Five hundred thirty-one thousand five forty-three. The debt fund, final. Twenty-three twenty-four budget. Has receipts of. Six million eight hundred ten thousand. Three hundred and eleven expenses, six million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-two. Leaving a fund balance of one million eighty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-nine. The final for the. Capital improvement. Has revenue transferred from general fund to the capital improvement of two hundred seventy-five thousand to match the expenses. That fund balance is zero because it will carry forward to the next school year. The final for the food service. Has a. Revenue of eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred forty-three with matching expenses. Leaving a fund balance of two thousand, seven hundred nine dollars. The general fund, final amendment, has an estimated revenue of. Twenty-one million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred forty. And expenses seventeen million, two hundred ninety-six thousand, six seventy-two. Leaving a fund balance, seven million, four hundred three dollars. Or seven million, four hundred, please, thousand and five hundred and thirty-two.
Alright, let's get this in order. So we need to vote on separate budgets. First budget being student and school fund, activity, activity fund. The receipts of a hundred thousand dollars, dispersment of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, ending the twenty-three twenty-four school year. With a projected fund balance of five hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars. Am I correct?
Yes.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to the special revenue student slash school activity. Fund number twenty-nine with a fund balance, ending with a fund balance of five hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars. Moved by member Cahoon to approve the amended twenty-three twenty-four school year. Student and school fund activity budget.
Support.
Second by member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing a sing none, call a roll, please.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, next budget amendment for twenty-three twenty-four school year. Uh, the fund balance summary, uh, there were receipts of six million, eight hundred ten thousand, three dollars. Dispersment of six million, eight hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars. Ending up with a fund balance of one billion, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the approval of budget amendment. Uh, to the fund balance, what is twenty-three twenty-four school year. Debt debt fund, I should say.
That's the debt fund?
The debt fund, yes. I I I said fund balance, supposed to be the debt fund.
So move.
Moved by member Collins.
Support.
Second, member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns? And I I spoke, misspoke, it is the debt fund. Hearing a sing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Next budget budget amendment is to the capital improvement. Uh, and uh, as of June nineteenth, we have a dispersment, receipts of two hundred seventy-five thousand dispersment of. Two hundred seventy-five thousand, uh, which is a fund balance of zero.
Move to approve the capital improvement fund?
Support.
Moved by member McFadden, second by member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing a sing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Amendment to food service fund. Uh, we had receipts of eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars. Dispersment of eight hundred thirty-seven dollars, five hundred forty-three thousand. Uh, giving us, uh, as of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, a fund balance of two thousand, seven hundred nine dollars. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the amendment to the third food service fund.
Move to, uh, accept the food service fund.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second, member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the food service fund? Hearing a sing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Excuse me, amendment to the general fund as of June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. We had total revenue of twenty-one million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. A total expenditures of seventeen million, two hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars. Bringing us to a project, projected fund balance of June, at June thirtieth, seven million, four hundred thousand, three dollars. Seven million, four hundred and three thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Any questions, comments, uh, chair would entertain a motion relative to the, uh, amendment to the twenty-three twenty-four general fund.
Move to support the general fund?
Moved by member McFadden.
Support.
Second member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the amendment to the twenty-four, twenty-three twenty-four? Uh, F F budget?
It's got a question, I mean, it's general fund and a twenty-three twenty-four final, that's how it's listed, that's the same thing, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor regarding the general, general fund? Hearing a sing none, call a roll.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Which brings us to item nine, A one.
Sure.
Does man?
I have a question.
Yes.
Well, um, so we talked about capital improvement, um, moving that to a capital improvement account. Rather than then listing it in the general fund for the next year. Talked that about at the finance meeting, correct? So I'd like to put a motion out to move that capital improvement money into the capital improvement account.
Is is that money already accounted for in the proposed budget?
It's, it's proposed to move it there, um, when expenses are expended.
Because she has it listed on here, if the Board of Education chooses, they can motion to transfer the funds to the capital improvement.
Okay, um.
Um, we were gonna get, um, a recommendation from the I S D and bring it back.
That's what I had asked about earlier, did she get? That's what I was asking about.
I got you.
And bring it back later for discussion.
We, yeah, we had discussion, yeah, we had discussion and, and, I'm sorry, we had discussion in the finance community whether to keep it as listed. I mean, it's already, it's, it's a capital improvement, but if you put it into an actual capital improvement account. Then it can't be used for anything else, but it can be used for any capital improvement throughout the distance, not just middle school. Then it can't be used for anything else, but it can be used for any capital improvement throughout the distance, not just middle school, something happened, we need a capital improvement at Seminole. We can use that money or here, you know, we can, any type of capital improvement, but we talked about, and that's what I asked her earlier. Doing it from doing her, uh, presentation, has she got, has she heard any information back from the ISD? As far as where we should, what we should do, move it to a capital improvement. Pacific account or let her stay how she has it listed now, but how how is listed now, that money can be used for anything. So that's the question.
So.
If we can amend the budget at any time, if we approve, um, the twenty four twenty five budget that as. Dolls gonna present. We can, uh, you know, if you get a word from the ISD.
Yeah, then then it was her, well, she was asking to move it, yeah.
So what I'd like to do is, um, have this specific, um, issue, uh, brought on the next. Um, either workshop or regular meeting as an agenda item.
Well, we need to hear back from the ISD.
I know, but I want to have it on the agenda so that we can remember to do it.
Okay.
Okay?
No problem, yes ma'am. Okay. FY twenty four twenty five proposed budget. Ms. Dolls, you're on.
Um. It's the recommendation, the board approved the twenty four twenty five proposed budgets as presented. For the five funds, um. Student school activity. Receipts and expenses, hundred thousand dollars each, leaving a fund balance of five hundred thirty one thousand five. Hundred forty three dollars.
Okay, there's a recommendation for the student slash school activity fund. Uh, uh, budget, proposed budget, uh, receipts of a hundred thousand dollars dispersment of a hundred thousand dollars. Bringing a fund balance of five hundred thirty one thousand five hundred and forty three dollars. Chair would. Motion regarding the proposed. Student slash school activity fund of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, receipts, a hundred thousand dollars dispersment. A projected fund balance of five, uh, five hundred thirty one thousand five hundred and forty three dollars.
I I move to approve the students, uh, student school activity fund. I'm a little bit confused, I thought we approved this.
That was the last, what we just talked, what we approved was the.
The final amendment.
Twenty three twenty four.
Now, now we're going to.
This is the proposed, so we already voted on the final for twenty four, which ends June thirty. Now we're, now we're going projection.
For the projection.
For July one, for June thirtieth.
So everything we voted on, it doubled, right?
Uh, everything we voted on.
It's just what he said, he said a bunch of things, confusing, that's what it is, all right, original, final, and general fund, capital fund are together, okay, got it. I move to approve the student and school activity fund as presented for projection.
Twenty four twenty.
Twenty four twenty five.
Moved by member McFadden, second by member Kahoon. Any questions, comments, concerns?
And that fund balance is from previous, yes, right?
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing a saying none, call the role players.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, the next fund is debt fund for the proposed twenty four twenty five school year with receipts. Six million four hundred fifty seven thousand. Expenses, seven million two hundred ninety three thousand eight hundred forty six, leaving a fund balance. Two hundred forty four thousand nine hundred three.
I move to approve the debt fund twenty four and twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Moved, moved by member McFadden, second by member Kahoon. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing a saying none, call the role players.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Capital improvement proposed twenty four twenty five. Receipt. Transfer from general fund of three million four hundred twenty five thousand. Expenses matching for the capital improvements of at Seminole and middle school roofing.
Heard the recommendation for capital improvement for, uh, FY FY twenty four twenty five. With a dispersment of transfer of three million four hundred twenty five thousand. A dispersment of three million four hundred twenty five thousand, winding up with a zero fund balance.
Move to approve the capital improvement fund for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
Moved by member McFadden. Second, member Kahoon. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing a saying none, call the role players.
Yes.
Doc.
I'm sorry. My fault, I anticipated that.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Foods, food service for twenty four twenty five proposed with revenue seven hundred fifty one thousand three hundred seventy five. Expenses, seven hundred four. Thousand two dollars. With a ending fund balance of fifty thousand eighty two dollars.
The recommendation is, uh, for the proposed twenty four twenty five, uh, school year budget. Uh, receipts of seven hundred fifty one thousand three hundred seventy five dollars dispersment of seven hundred four thousand two dollars. Uh, leaving a fund balance of fifty thousand eighty two dollars. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the food food service fund.
So moved.
Moved by member Collins.
Support.
Second, member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns? Uh, yeah, just our question is, that's inclusive of the new contract, uh, with the new vendor? I understand that they were, uh, less, their their budget that the state approved, uh, was less than our current vendor. And, um, can you refresh what what the, um, bottom line is in terms of projected, uh, savings?
Um, from their budget proposals?
Yes, yes.
Um, sure.
I I recall something about thirty thousand, but I just, um.
Um, thirty four thousand nine hundred twenty one was the difference in their bid proposal for the meal cost. Um, and that was one section of the bid calculator, and then there was additional, um, points to get from both companies.
Thank you. The proposed for twenty four twenty five receipts, seven fifty one, seven hundred, seven hundred fifty one thousand three hundred seventy five dollars dispersment of. Seven hundred four thousand and two dollars with a fund balance of, projected fund balance of fifty thousand eighty two dollars, chair would entertain a motion.
Very, very good.
I already made a motion?
We did, yeah. Ms. Collins, then, Mr. Walker.
You're right. You're right, thank you. I got that, I didn't get it on the wrong side. Okay, uh, additional questions, comments, concerns, that's why I put myself up, ask a question. Hearing a saying none, call the role players.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
General fund twenty four twenty five proposed budget. Revenue fifteen million four hundred twenty five thousand two hundred eighty seven. Expenses nineteen million three hundred sixty six. Two hundred and thirty five. With a ending, uh, fund balance projected of three million four hundred sixty two thousand five hundred eighty four.
Proposed. Budget for fiscal year twenty four twenty five of fifteen million four hundred twenty five thousand two hundred eighty seven dollars. Projected expenditures of nineteen, nineteen million three hundred sixty six thousand two hundred thirty five dollars. Uh, which have a projected fund balance of three million four hundred sixty two dollars. Three million four hundred sixty two thousand five hundred eighty four dollars. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the proposed twenty four twenty five school year budget. Moved by member Kahoon.
Support.
Second by member McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns?
So that balance of three million four sixty two, that includes the capital improvement, right?
That, the balance, um, it has it in the expenses, transferring over in the expenses. So if we spend all of the capital improvement, then we, it won't show up next, the paneling year.
So my question is, on this general fund, this balance, does that take into consideration the capital improvement?
Yes, it's taking, it's not.
Taking it out?
Yes.
Okay.
That's good.
So this is real. This is a real number minus the capital, the capital improvements aren't in there, this doesn't include it at all.
The bottom line, the capital improvement shows up in the expenses. So it's deducted from the beginning fund balance and it, the capital improvement's deducted from that to result in the, in fund balance.
I guess I'm the only one confused, but I'm confused.
Well, maybe I can help you.
Okay.
Uh, we have projected revenue of fifteen million four hundred twenty three, four hundred twenty five thousand two hundred seventy, eighty seven. Then we have total expenditures of nineteen million three hundred sixty six thousand two hundred thirty five.
Correct.
That's inclusive of the three million four hundred fifty two, fifty three thousand two hundred fifty one dollars that have been, that we're transferring from this year. To next year as an expense, it's not, it's not a revenue, it's an expense, that's why you your 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 revenue is fifteen million and your expenses are nineteen million. But that's inclusive of 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 that. That's how I understood, you know, help me out, I'm wrong face, I'm, I've gone face a couple times today already, but.
So even if. So our, so next year, our expenses are gonna outweigh. What, what we bring in, is that correct?
Yes.
But three million of that is is money that we're transferring over.
Correct, but we're still gonna be in a deficit.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Do either of these budgets include the sale of King?
Um, yes, um, that's in the twenty. Twenty four twenty five, in the revenue.
Is that in this one, this general fund?
Yes. So it shows up in general fund first before it. In the revenue, the sale of King will show up as revenue in general fund and then as an expense from general fund to. The capital improvement as that is expended, that's how it's set up right now.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns, clarifications? Everybody be comfortable what we're doing. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing a saying none, call the role players.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda. Uh, informational items, item ten. Ten A, May financial reports, any questions, comments, concerns regarding the May financial reports, Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we just, well, you just had explained these budgets four times. I, and I agree with you, it's how it was set up, how. The budgets, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, but. We, we should have first did the twenty twenty four final student debt, uh, uh, student school aid debt, capital improvement, food service. That's all falls under that, that's the final budget that we set for twenty three twenty four.
Remember I said at the beginning, she said that we got five budgets.
Yeah, well, because. She, she wanted this make, and then you go to accept of the original budget, twenty four, twenty, yeah, twenty four twenty five. We accept the stu, projected student aid fund, projected debt fund, oh, boom, 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 so.
We went around the block twice.
Yeah, we circled that wagon about six times, so that's for the future, I think that's how it should be done, just final amendment to the final. Budget for the current year and then.
That incl- is an umbrella that includes.
Exactly, that includes it all, then for the original, for the for the upcoming year, that's umbrella that includes it all, yeah. Cause she also talked about it in the, the meeting we had before, that meeting.
Any additional questions regarding the May financial reports? Any questions regarding the contract listing? Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President, I know we talked about, uh, and I apologize if I'm asking redundant questions, but I know. So are we good where our, are where we at with, uh? Maintenance?
Yeah, that was in this.
That was in there, okay.
Under the contract agenda.
Okay, food service?
Yeah.
And then, okay, all right.
Thanks.
Any additional questions, comments, concern? Um, next month, um, we'll see our new vendors that. Under the contract, correct?
Say that again?
On next month's report, under the contract listing.
Oh, it'll be updated.
You should see the new vendors. Any additional questions regarding the contract listings? I'm eleven, I don't know if you have anything, Mr. Lavender, but.
Yes, we do.
Yes, sir.
So prior to, uh, Mr. Roper. Leaving for his conference, Ms. Dawson and I met him, and he asked us to share a few things for him, so we'll both be sharing if that's okay.
No problem.
All right, first, um, we'd like to honor and celebrate Ju- Juneteenth, uh, today we honor freedom and justice reflecting on how far we have come and the work still ahead. Second comment has to do with clarifying the graduation rate for the students who were in our building during the twenty three twenty four school year. during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, there were forty-eight seniors, forty-three of them graduated. So that puts us at eighty-nine point six percent. State reporting, uh, is a combined, uh, reporting data point that includes four-year, five-year, and six-year students. So we won't know that number until the state releases that in the future, but what we do know and can confirm is that of the forty-eight students who were seniors this year in our building, forty-three of them graduated. So the eighty-nine point six is up from last year and years prior. Um, the third comment, um, Mister Roper elected to freeze his salary from the twenty-three, twenty-four to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Instead of accepting the, the two percent raise that was in this contract, so that's a freeze, uh, Miss Dawes and I both agreed to do the same, uh, we understand that, uh, we've had to make some very tough decisions regarding jobs, lack of raises, other cuts, so trying to demonstrate a good faith effort to contribute to that. And lastly, Miss Dawes would like to give an update on the roof.
Um, room roofing, um, has been out and done work to gather information. And, um, they have now, per, they put together something, but we have to get on the books, um, we're trying to set something up for next week to, for them to present, uh, Mister Roper and myself and then, um, bring it to the board what their, um, what results they got from the roof inspection. And then there was one other thing, I wanted to give an update on the Seminole project, um, June sixth, we've met with partners in Architect and they brought their project manager, manager from Quadrate. And they have approvals from the state and most submittals have been reviewed and equipment ordered. They started work this last Monday at Seminole. The rooftop equipment has been installed and they are moving forward with interior mechanical work. And it's planned, um, that all work except for the chiller will be complete before school begins in the fall. Um, the reason the chiller, there's a manufacturer lead time on getting the equipment, so they'll schedule that over a break, if it comes in sooner, they might be able to install it sooner. And that was it.
Thank you, Miss Dawes, Miss Lavender. Excuse me. Item twelve, board comments. Miss Kahoon?
Um, mind, it's just gonna be really quick, uh, first off, I am still praying for each and every family that endured such pain this past weekend in Rochester Hills. Um, I'm just praying for healing and, um, strength for everyone involved, uh, but especially for the victims. And everybody was a victim that witnessed it and endured it, so my heart is out to them. To the families and the faculty here at Mount Clemens, um, I applaud each of you um immensely for the hard work that you all did this year, um, and the, um, end of the school year was amazing, I wasn't able to attend certain, uh, well, any of the events actually. But, um, what I'm seeing online compared to what I saw previously, um, outstanding, outstanding. And you guys should, um, just grumble in that because you worked hard. I think the next year is gonna be even harder, right, cause we have to keep it up, but I know that you all are up for the challenge. And to everyone who is doing this and, and possibly taking pay cuts or no raises or anything like that, I applaud that effort because that speaks volumes to me as a board member, me as a community member, and just in general, so, um, I thank you for everything that you guys have done and I'm looking forward to next year. And also to my fellow board members, um, the board retreat, I wasn't here last month, but the board retreat was amazing. I learned a lot from each and every one of you and I'm looking forward to this next year and looking to, to continue the trend, right? Cause it's gonna be a trend coming into this next year or something, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Kahoon. Mister Monk?
Thank you, Mister President, I'm, like I always say, I'm gonna try to be short, uh, but, um, you know, I wanna say congratulations to our seniors, um, of twenty-twenty-four, the, uh, you know, that's an outstanding number, um, I mean, we haven't seen that number in quite a while, forty-three, so, you know, congratulations to the whole entire senior class. Um, congratulation to, and I hope you guys pass along to, um, Mister Roper, so Superintendent Roper and his first graduation. Um, I know I sat next to him doing a graduation and he was just ecstatic seeing all the kids walk across the stage and, uh, being out there and, uh, just seeing the, uh, happy faces, the, the cheers and everything, he was, uh, he was on cloud nine. I wanna say, uh, thank you to our teachers. Thank you to our teachers and, 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 and the whole staff, I was at home and I seen this program. I don't think, you know, the general public really, really, really knows what goes all into, um, teaching a child. First they gotta, i- i- you know, it's like an onion, you gotta peel back all those issues that they actually come in the door with. And then you gotta assess them and, you know, teachers are where the rubber meets the road, so my hat's off to all of our teachers in any position that you're in for your hard work, for your dedication, um. And I, me personally as a board member appreciate that and I love to see that and I will continue to support that in any possible way that I can. Um, happy Juneteenth there, everyone, um. I have never seen, and I'm being totally honest right now, and I sat on this board for nine years and I've been in this district since my, I've been in this district almost thirty-five years, I've never seen an administration lockstep like you guys. You guys are a team and I, I appreciate that and it shows. You guys are a team and I wish Superintendent was here, um, and that says something about his leadership. Um, you guys are just awesome, you know, so I just wanna thank you guys for the gift, that's a gift to us, for y'all to take a pay. I, I ain't never heard that and I ain't never seen it, but I, I, that, thank you for that gift and thank you for, yeah, definitely, you understand? Thank you for that and that just shows y'all dedication to this district and to these families and to these kids. So y'all inspiring me to work even harder as I sit on this board, so I thank you for that, that is just, I, I mean, that's awesome. That's just absolutely awesome, um, as I always say, you know. When I was a parent of kids in this district, I, my, my son and my daughter, we, we, we made them read a book every summer. I got my book to read this summer, so I encourage parents to, you know, we got a wonderful new library here in the city, but, you know, reading was never my thing, but now it is, I can't stop reading, so my, my, my reading that I get for myself is All Roads Lead to Newton Grove. And it's actually a family heritage book that I'm reading and it said, and it's written by, uh, it says the history of the Monk family, Pamela Monk Kelly wrote it, so this is gonna be my summer, but I encourage, um, all of our students, our parents, uh, have, ha- have your, have your, have your children just pick up a book, it ain't gotta be a thick book like this, it can be just a small book, but read. So I, I definitely encourage that, walking in here today, it is hot out there, y'all, so I just encourage everyone in this community and everywhere, try to stay cool, try to stay safe, um, and those are my comments, Mister President.
Thank you, Mister Monk. Ms. Collins?
Um, I'm gonna keep my comments short, um, congratulations to our graduates, uh, the graduation ceremony was fantastic. Um, I wanna say to Daniel Stevens, you did an outstanding job, I know that, um, it's hard to get help. Uh, like I've experienced that with Rachel Joseph during homecoming, so to the staff, I did step up and help you, thank you so much, I'm, I'm glad that you had some assistance in creating such a great day for our kids, um. I'm excited about our T-shirt and our book from our speakers at graduation, um, this is a really nice gift to receive. As a board member, I, I really thought these were going for the students, so I'm looking forward to being able to even read book and I'll wear the T-shirt while I'm reading it. But, um, other than that, um, stay cool for the next few days, we'll pass to, um, one more comment.
Thank you.
Oh, one more.
This man.
Thank you to Denise Messner for the AED, thank you, um, that's a, a very expensive um tool for us to have here and I think we do have one, but we don't even know how old it is, um, or if it's working. So it's great to have one, so thank you. Sorry.
Mister Walker?
Thank you, um, gradu- graduation was fantastic, it was great, uh, seeing some of those students walk our stage, um, being able to look back and see how far they've come, a bunch of no heads, um. It was great, um, great, great part of Daniel Stevens, um, coordinating that effort, um, so it's been great helping out, um. It was great being at the, the rate for graduation, is a great, maybe it's an increase from last year. Um, thank you to our staff, um, for putting in all this work this year, um, next year is gonna be even harder or easier. And, um, thank you for all our staff who stepped up to staff, um, summer school, I know it's hard not to be open to your time and free time during the summer, um, and I would say, um, thank you to our central office staff for all your work. I know it's hard and tough and long hours during the day and, and the heat, keep cool, um, and thank you for your leadership for over the school year and into the future, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mister Walker, Doctor McFadden?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you, um. I'm wanting to just echo the comments of my board members, congratulations to everybody, especially those students. Um, I'm always gonna say thank you to the students because they, they're a reason why we're here, uh, we still need to lock in because next year is coming deep, it's coming quick, it's coming fast, so, yeah, we got through this year, we made sure we had some money in the bank, but we got a lot of things coming forward that we need to lock in. Um, thank you Denise Messner for the AED, definitely needed, um. You know, day's Juneteenth, I wasn't what Harbaugh is, but you know, the battle for freedom is not, not done, uh, we still have to, you know, freedom is free. We got people that's fighting on the front line for our freedom, make things happen, you know, it'd be great, once we see segregation, that's its segregation, go away, because it is here, because if you support school of choice at that matter, that's already the diverse segregation, I'm gonna put it out there. Some people might not like what I say, but that's alright, that's what I say. What I do like to see is how we care this district, support our students, to avoid self-hate. Because some people that come to this district and some people not to, because they don't, they afraid to come and do things with people that look like them, talk like them, walk like them, act like them, that's just teaching self-hate, so I'm glad that, that is over. No matter what your orientation, your gender, your make, or whatever your weight or your height, so that's, that's a great strength that we have in this district. So like I said, this gonna go out on the internet, a lot of people not gonna like what I'm saying, but that's alright, this is true. Uh, those are my comments, Mister President.
Thank you, Doctor McFadden. Congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty-four, uh, the ceremony was, was a great ceremony. Uh, the kids were over-exuberant, uh, their parents were more over-exuberant than the students. Um, at times there were board members that were doing crowd control, uh, because no matter what venue you have a graduation in and no matter how many times you say, hold your applause down so people can hear, you know, the next student, you know, you know, that's just word said, because people are gonna cheer for, for their students, they're gonna get up and run to the front and take pictures of them, not know, not realizing that they gonna come around to them, so. But anyway, um, the crowd, the students were exuberant, the, the crowd was over-exuberant, um. But overall, it, it was a great ceremony, I, and I realize that, um, there's off-time lack of support, uh, and in organizing and, you know, put, pulling off, uh, such an event like that, this is the first time we, we had it in a gym in, in some years, uh, last few, few years we had it outside, uh, in, in the stadium. This year it was, um, changed to the gym, which created some other, some logistical issues that weren't considered, uh, because we hadn't been in the gym in such a long time, but, um, overall, it, it was, it was a great, it was a great ceremony. Uh, all the clear students were excited and, um, ninety, eighty, eighty-nine point six percent rate of graduation, you know, you're gonna have people, they're gonna be on Facebook, you know, and social media, there are only forty-three students graduated from Mount Clemens. You know, those were the number of students we had, you know, we had forty-eight seniors, forty-three graduated, that's ninety, that's eighty-nine point six percent. Uh, and that's a great graduate, graduation rate, we would always hope to have one hundred percent, but that's always a hope. Um, but to have a graduation rate in an urban school, uh, nine, of eighty-nine point six percent is an outstanding graduation rate. And we should not rest on those laurels, but, you know, next year try to, uh, our attempt, our attempt will be to increase, uh, the graduation rate, um, to our staff, our professional teaching staff, our support staff, uh, whatever, whatever thing, whatever it is your role in the school district, we thank you for your service, thank you for what you do. We realize that you go above and beyond, um, your, your call of duty, uh, off-time you're doing things that you don't get paid for. Off-time you're spending your own money, uh, for resources that you don't have in the classroom, uh, and, and for that, uh, for your dedication to, to our student, to the students that are in the Mount Clemens Community School District, we, we're thankful uh, for your dedication and your service, uh, to the central office staff, uh, your gesture of taking a pay freeze, uh, when your contract says you were entitled to a raise, that, you know, from my perspective, that shows leadership by example. You are showing, um, by example, um, that you're here, uh, for the be, the benefit and the betterment of the students that, that walk, of the halls of our schools and for that, we, we're truly appreciative of, of that and, and what, what you're doing for, for the students, uh, in this district. There's an election in November, there are four seats that are up, uh, in November, um, for, so, so people who, who think this job is easy and think we don't do anything at, at the board table, put your hat in the ring. You have the guts and courage, you know, to step out and put yourself in that position. Uh, to my colleagues around the board table, I appreciate each and every one of you, um, with off-times, we have citizens who come to the microphone, they ostracize, they lie, they say untruths, they ridicule uh, i- us collectively and individually, um, and then at the end of the day, they, they disappear and they never show up again. Um, last year, uh, with this board was criticized for not making decisions, that decisions that we weren't gonna make or didn't make or were projected to make, the board makes our decisions based on recommendations. If we don't have a recommendation come before the. If we don't have a recommendation come before the board, we don't make a decision. So we were ostracized and criticized, uh, you know, comments, ninety percent of the residents or the citizens' comments were people who worked in the district or who used to work in the district. I heard somebody refer to the board as being like apartheid. Um, Mr. Walker was criticized of being too young to, to vote. I was stated as being a spokesperson for the board, that the board, I didn't allow the board members to speak their, speak their, their perspectives and to vote how they felt they were bored, uh, that how they were bored. But then, uh, we come here every, every month, uh, after doing our homework, but then they disappear. Um, they won't apologize for them being wrong, they won't apologize for criticizing and ridiculing, uh, the board and what we do. But that's fine, because, um, when you're in an elected position, you, you, you take those hits. And you take those hits, but you keep on getting up because we're at the board table, uh, offering a service free of charge. Um, free, F-R-E-E of charge.
Volunteer.
We spend hours. Off-time, we spend more hours doing board work than we do at a regular job. Because our regular job, we know that job. The board stuff that happens, it comes at you so furiously, so often, in so many different perspectives, and you don't know what's going on. So you have to, you have to study, and you have to, you have to inundate yourself with what's going on. But the pe- the public that see that, they just see at a board meeting and say, oh, the board didn't listen to us, or the board didn't do what we told them to do. Here's a chance, there's four seats available, put your hat in the ring. And, and you get on this side of the table and, and see what it's like to have somebody ridicule you for, for decisions that you make that are for the good of the totality and not just for the good of, of, of a couple or a few. Um, I could go on and on, but I won't. Um, it's, it's, it's a little warm out there, but personally, I wait all winter for this. Uh, but be safe, um, if you're out there, um, be safe, take, stay hydrated, and this is not gonna last, last for long. Hey, in ten days, you might have to have a jacket on. This is Michigan. Um, so what else I gotta say, Dave? Is that it?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Um, those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait, 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 no, wait, you're right, you, thank you, go on, you didn't tell me. We have to have a special board meeting next Wednesday. Um, the superintendent was not here this evening. We have to, uh, approve the strategic plan, um, by the end of this month. Also, we have to evaluate the superintendent by the end of this month. Um, I, the, the legal counsel that did the training, uh, for the, the evaluation instrument, uh, they will be available to be here, uh, next Wednesday at six thirty P M. So like the board to, um, put their calendars together.
That's the twenty-sixth.
Next Wednesday, it will be June the twenty-sixth, and, um, six thirty, uh, P M.
I just have one question on the evaluation. With the new sto- state law taking effect July first, does that have any effect on doing his evaluation on the twenty-sixth?
No, because that doesn't go into effect until July one. We're, we're evaluating the superintendent from July one of last year to June thirty of this year. And that's why we were having, uh, Gary Collins, Collins and Blaha, come in and facilitate, um, that session for us.
I'm gonna have a special meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, at six thirty P M here in this location.
Support.
Brought by Dr. McFadden, seconded by Member Collins to hold this special board meeting, Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, six thirty P M, uh, in this chamber. Any questions, comments, concerns?
We're gonna be fed.
Huh?
We're gonna be fed.
Hey, we can work on it.
I said, I mean, that, this thing, this thing can be possibly long.
It's hard to say because we, we'll work on it.
All right, okay.
We'll be in between vendors, so.
There you go.
We, we, we'll work on it.
There you go.
Right this hour, we'll work on it. Mr. Walker, you have any questions?
This is, um, for you and you, um, so I was thinking, uh, for the policy.
Yes.
Hold on, hold on, gotta be with the motion on the floor, the motion on the floor is for a special.
Yeah. I'm, I'm asking about the agenda. It's, uh, I'm asking about, about the agenda for a special meeting.
Okay.
So I was wondering if you wanted to do a second reading? Not wait until the regular reading of next month?
We could have do that special meeting. I mean, it can go through this, like, top, quick, bam, second reading, yeah.
You got ninety-nine policies, it's gonna be quick.
No, it's gonna be, no, because I ain't gotta read them. It's, it's all, it's just emotional. It's just emotional. Because we gonna do the language, we gonna do a Zoom to tighten up what we need to tighten up, then it gets emotional to set a second.
No, we, we just a question.
We can consider that, so, yes, sir. Any additional questions, comments, concerns, the motion on the floor?
He didn't wanna be motion.
I know, right? Seeing here, now, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Ripley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at.